Welcome, everybody, to the annual budget meeting. Carolyn, you're on, I see. Is Kathleen on or not on?
She's not.
I know she was going to try to get on. Okay, we can start it up and Dr. Vieta, over to you.
Thank you. So, the budget process that was sent to the school committee, as you guys all know, started before the holiday break in 2021. And very traditional, we send it out to everybody, top down, down, up, or bottom up, getting people some more thorough budget this year, especially from a couple of areas where our faculty and staff have got more involved with their principals, which is a good thing. And then, as an administrative team, we reviewed with each of the departments. Of course, we looked at our mandates, we looked at some of our concerns. The school committee is very aware, I think the public is aware, based on a number of comments through the last few months, that the concern around students' mental health continues to be a priority. As the school committee knows, this week alone, we had ambulance calls to schools taking students that were going through some significant negative circumstances in not only depression, but suicide tendencies and actually potential attempts. That is not a norm to us, to be quite honest, on a day-to-day, but it is the new norm that we're in right now nationally. We're seeing a lot of this. So I just want everybody to know out there that this is not just a Norton issue. This is an issue that's happening in inner cities, in rural communities, in suburban communities like Norton that are very supportive and trying to do the right thing through his community and its school committee and the school department, but the town in general. People need to be aware of that. The other part is, we try to provide the school committee what we would call a budget that continues to move us forward, but has some limitations from the requests that came in versus what is being put forward. And a lot of that has to do with two things. The first one is really trying to target the needs of students through the acceleration program, for example, that we're doing through counseling and supports in the classroom, through the multi-year system that we're going to, or already started to put into place in some ways, where I have PBIS at the elementary level moving to middle school and so on, through response intervention, to the interventionist that we have for the first time in the district this year at the number that we have the math, so that we're actually targeting students before 504s, our IEPs coming into place, as a way to move us forward. There's a lot of concern from parents around, you know, did my child regress during the last couple of years? I can tell you, it's very individually-based, it's all over the place in terms of some students are doing just fine, some students are excelling, some students did regress. So the target is on our back to academically and socially, emotionally, support those individual students and those subgroups of students. And of course, the members of the administrative team are here today, so feel free to talk about this after I go through this. We also provided, for the first time, to the school committee kind of, and we will to the Fincum, a five-year kind of take a look at our cost for special education out of district costs, right? Which I think is really, really important, thanks to Vinnie Cerzio, the director of PPS, and Casey Russo, coordinator of special education, and the work of many other folks in the trenches. We have some stabilization in that department, where we're right in that 33, 34, 35 students. But again, if a student cuts in school and all of a sudden is dealing with significant social, emotional, and we can't provide the therapeutic supports that are needed, that student could easily become an out-of-district situation. And I'll give you a couple of scenarios. This year, we had a transfer into the district at a cost of $284,000. So I just want you to think about what that means. That's a direct impact on July 1st of $284,000 to that budget. We're here to support that child and their family, of course. We will do our best, of course. But these are the curveballs that we get that there is no way you can budget for today, or until July 1st, or September 9th, or throughout the year. And that's the quirkiness of our budget when it comes to that specific area. The second part is, as much as we're trying to look at this five-year, looking at things like out-of-district, per the story I just told you, these numbers get completely out of whack by $284,000, just like that. The only time that you see the positive of that is when you have students who age out, which we've showed you in this. And of course, those are tentative, right? Because of the way the process can work. Or students who potentially move out of our district, they go somewhere else where we absorb the cost for X number of months or the remainder of the year, and then they're no longer on our rolls. The third part of that, and really, really important, the success of going from 60-plus students out of district nine years ago to 33, 34 today, and a cut of about 10 in the last three or four years, means no circuit breaker money for those students. So if the student came back into the district from a $50,000 placement, and we're losing the first $40,000, and then we get 70% of $10,000, because that's the formula rate, if you remember, that's $7,000, a small amount on that case. Let's say it's a $100,000 case, you lose 40, you got 60, you get 75% of 60, so you get about $40,000 back, or you get it into the, that's gone. Because you don't get it for getting the students, for keeping the kids, because you can't meet that 40,000 threshold. So you do great things by bringing the child back. We want that, we save money, yeah, we want that, but we lose money, if you will, in terms of the circuit breaker process. So that's the third part of that story. The other part is, in the budget proposal before you, which I broke down even further, not only to the mandated education, which is an increase of the budget, is up 2.33%, which is a very conservative approach, and even our mandated. And then our general education, which is up 2.32%, again, those numbers have never been closer than they are right now, which is kudos to the work before us. And then transportation, you know, we have a $2.2 million transportation line item between general education and special education, including the $135,000, $140,000 that we collect in fees. So it's a nugget, it's only .19 increase to the budget, but it is 2.86% of that cost center, and it's $2.2 million. That probably has the least, it has a direct access to education because the kids need to get to school, but it has the least day-to-day in terms of the teaching and learning. So yes, you got to get kids to school, but it's a nugget. $2 million is a lot of money for transportation. So our budget request is for an increase of $1,560,926 or 4.84%. This is the smallest budget proposal you will vote in in the nine years that I've been here, overall. Now, if in fact, we're able to have some discussions, as we've had with the town, about moving funds to the fall town meeting, then this will actually get us closer to the 3% threshold that's wanted. So let's say you were to take $500,000, $550,000 out of this budget, move it towards transportation in the fall, has happened a few times, then it's a 3.15%.
Okay, I'll give you one second. Karen?
She's already done it.
Okay. All right, sorry.
So what that means is, as you look on page two, and I'm not going to go line item by line item here, but I just want to talk briefly. This means that one of the best decisions, as this says, that we've ever made as a team is school choice. Now, it's controversial, and I understand that, but the fact is that the matter, at the end of the day, without $2 million in school choice, we're in deep trouble. Not only in this budget, but all the other budgets that we have. You'll get a recommendation next week to open school choice, K to 10. We now have every neighboring community except for Easton, and that little piece of Foxport that we have connected to us, everybody's doing school choice. We were the first one out, now everybody's doing it. We have 193 students this year in school choice, and that number will go up. And the reason that number will go up is the success that we've had. We have over 20 calls and emails already for next year. We will have to take a look at a couple tweaks, particularly in grade two, where we have some class sizes that are up. The problem is, because of the special education work that we've been doing of creating programs at home, we also are running into a space issue at the LGN, where if we wanted to open another grade-two classroom, we are not sure we know where the heck we're going to put it. So we're going to have to be creative if class size grows in that area. The other part that's important is that we are keeping fees as they are. We did have a lot of discussions about doing it, but to be quite honest, many of you know that we have been talking about the FY24 problem, and 23, but 24 problem. And to be quite honest, to cut fees now to only a year from now, bring them back at even higher than they are, makes no sense. I think $250 for transportation. We've gone from the highest, number-one in fees, to actually mid-level, in some cases, the lowest. That's a good thing, not a bad thing.
I don't think there's probably any appetite to raise fees, quite honestly. So I think that you can take that off the table. I feel fairly confident in saying that.
Yeah, I think keeping the fees as they are is a good thing. The only fee that we want to talk about and will present later on, as we have another year, will be little answers, because that has more of a direct impact. So we want to have some discussions about that going forward. In terms of grants, we will utilize about $850,000 of the 1.45 million that's left in that. Again, remind yourselves, please, that we want to expand what we're providing students. As part of the federal government real push is that, you know, we want to make sure that we're providing services to students that can make us a better district to support acceleration, tutoring, homework centers, to support adjustment counselors, all of that stuff. So keep that in mind as we're talking about these federal grants. I think that, correct me, Jen, if I'm wrong, but I think S R 2, we have 70 cents left in it.
S R 1, we have 75 cents.
We have 75 cents left in it.
We spent that grant.
Do you have any plans for it?
Yes, 75 cents.
It's in discussion.
Couple pencils.
Make a phone call, make a phone call.
Vote on it next week.
We're assuming circuit breaker, as you see, and using it all. And again, we should be as much as possible. The hopefully positive is two things of circuit breaker. There is a recommendation to increase circuit breaker by $11 billion for next year, which would be a good thing. There's a supplemental budget for this year, which would mean we could end up sometime after June 30th getting more money in circuit breaker. That would be a good thing. And then lastly, there's the transportation circuit breaker. If you remember the sheet that I gave you on the tuitions for out-of-district, you'll see line items here for anywhere from transportation, anywhere from, you know, $6,400 to, you know, $46,51,000, $58,000 a year. Imagine now getting some type of a percentage of that back into a transportation circuit breaker. That would be a huge win for us. Transportation costs for FY23 is probably in the vicinity of just under $1 million. So imagine we got 50% of that back. It completely changes our budget in terms of the ability to move forward. On page three, which will be the last page, because everything else is a line item after that, unless you have questions, we did take the mandates of the special education teacher at the high school, the school adjustment counselor for the best in grade K to 5 as a priority, the music teacher moving halftime from the YEL to full-time at the middle school, meaning we need to backfill here. The reason for that is it just completely makes the schedule at the middle school much better for support services, as well as overall implementation of student needs. And then the wonderful, thanks to Vinnie and Casey really pushing me on this, I think after about eight years of discussion, it's finally there. And that is a halftime transitional specialist for our high school to work with our students who are transitioning out of our district in a number of directions, into state services programs and supports, into the workplace, making sure that they have those types of supports in place. This is something we have to do, we don't really have a choice. And this economy is both good and bad for these types of situations when we're looking at students that we're trying to support. Many of this has to do with students' direct IEPs. And then everything after that is deferred. I will tell you that the science teacher at the high school, the library for the YEL, and the middle school are priorities. So if the budget after June 30th has any type of flexibility, those will be, as you guys know, over the summer. If we have savings, we do two things with it. We put it A into our accounts that have been zeroed out, so, or are in trouble, i.e. substitutes, i.e. maternity leave knowledge that we end up finding out in the fall, or we try to do the science in this case. Science is number one for one reason. If you remember, we cut a science position. So this is not a new position, this is a recall of a old position, because we moved it to computer science. We now have a fantastic, small, but fantastic and very aggressive computer science program at the high school that is growing every day. So this would allow for us to bring back a science teacher. And again, then we have to kind of really think about where this science teacher is going to physically be, because our building and the renovation was actually built with very, like, just X number of rooms. So we have to, we'll have to get creative about that.
So you said the library, media specialist, and the science teacher are the two that you would go back?
Those will be priorities, because they have direct impact on teaching and learning. We need, thanks to the work of a parent working with Jen, working with the building principals, working with a letter that you received from a parent who's been giving back to this community for months, and I should say, years and hours, we need to prioritize what you see done over in this building alone, this small library, but the amount of free space that we have. Because the next thing is not only going through all of this and getting the extension of service. Imagine during ELA time at the YEL, being able to come to the library and getting teaching and learning about the library, about best practices. And I think long-term, looking at things like digital citizenship and improving how kids are utilizing that. And in the middle school, it's a little bit of a disaster, as you guys all know. I mean, to look behind me and to the side of me, and everything is empty. It's empty because everything is outdated. You know, we can't be having certain books that just are outdated in terms of they've been there since the beginning of that fill time. So that's the overall change in personnel. Now, remind ourselves that today, we have only three retirements. We have a middle school retirement, a high school retirement, who am I missing? And a principal retirement. So all three of those must be filled. And just to give you an update, we are closing the principal search on
The 14th.
The 14th of this month. We're up to 13 candidates.
As of yesterday.
As of yesterday, we do have experienced candidates. By experience, I mean both principal and assistant principals. So that's a good thing. We currently do not have any internal candidates. And as you know, we have a working committee that will make recommendations to me about the hiring.
With respect to the budget, I assume that that principal position is not going to move the needle either way. I think it's probably going to be something we fill around the same.
Yeah, it'd probably go one way or the other. I mean, it can go up 10.
But not much.
It can go down 10, up 10. I mean, it's going to be, depend on the experience that we're getting.
So it's going to be irrelevant.
One of the issues becomes that, yesterday, I was at NESDEC, the organization that is actually running the search, and I sit on the board, and so it's the six new independent states. And we're all superintendents on the board, and everybody's looking for a principal. And some people have already posted a second time. They can't find anybody. So what does that mean? That means the competition is high, that means finances matter, they just do. And it is what it is. The other thing that I think is important is, you know, based on the information that I have so far, and again, I'm kind of out here, I just get to see the resumes right now. I don't have any input on who gets interviewed and doesn't, I stay out of that, is we do have some experienced folks, you know, but if you're coming from X community that pays, you know, $125 for a 202-day assistant principal job, are you willing to take $120,000 for a 12-month principal job with a lot more responsibilities? I don't know. We'll see, for some folks, they'll do that, because it's an opportunity.
Quality of life.
And quality of life. I think we have a good reputation that the school committee is supportive, that the administration wants to work as a team on a consistent basis, that we do make decisions as a team. And the LGN has a really solid reputation from its staff, right? It's a search that the staff there wants somebody that likes kids, knows what they're doing, wants to be collaborative. As you know, the LG has a tendency to take care of its own problems, right? It doesn't usually blow up into big toppers. The only thing I want to note.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
Are any of the candidates, candidates that had applied for the JCS position?
I'll defer.
Yes.
That answer is yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. So the other, the other thing that goes with this is you'll see a lot of notes on the side of our budget in the line items. I just want to make sure that people understand what split retroactive K-12, 2021 means. What that means is that most of the administrators, all of the administrators took a 0% cost of living increase from July to December of that year. So if you look at page four, for example, page one, you'll see, yes, you'll see that the sped director, director of personal services, split retroactive K-12, 2021. The reason why that note is there is because the increase looks larger than what it is, because it's over two years. And the reason for that is because when we published our budget, the actual budget, it was zeroed out. So then we made the change later. I just want to make sure people know that it's, that's what's happening. Because that'll be a lot of questions about how people are getting 20% raises or something, and that's what's not going, that's not what's going on. The other thing is, we do have budgeted two, remind me if I'm correct, two substitutes.
Two building subs.
Two building subs, per building.
Permanent.
Full-time, permanent. So we've kind of backed off that we're probably not going to need as much sub coverage, because we are really trying to work with those two folks. Hopefully, they come back. I'm going to, I'm going to give them reasonable assurance letters, which means they are reasonably assured to come back in the fall.
So you have two subs per building?
Per building, yep.
Permanent, okay.
Yep, and of course, that's, some of those change, because sometimes they end up backfilling a full-time job that's needed for the rest of the year, and then we just go back and refill it again.
Yeah.
But we're trying to create our own little subgroup, if you will, by doing that. So it's gotten, I mean, during the height of our COVID situation, it was brutal, as you guys know. It's actually calmed down pretty significantly. So it's at a better place than we've been before. And, I mean.
So that keeps us consistent with having a sub in classrooms, though we're not scrambling, having you guys fill in, right? That's what that does.
Building principals.
Building principals. I mean, we've had to, all of us have had to step in at some point during the height of COVID, but to be quite honest, it really is a lot of pressure on our building principals. I mean, if you have to cover, I mean, I'll give you an example. Vinnie Hayward, all of a sudden, has a traveling cart, because he's putting himself between two classrooms, because there were no subs. He's got 60 kids in the cafeteria, and he's got his cart going back and forth, so he can still answer emails and deal with the other issues that come up. I think one of the things that we're missing, you all know that it's been very successful with the dean of students job here. I can assure you that the dean of students job at the high school has been very successful. We really need a dean of students at the middle school. It's a teaching position, it is not an administrative position. The position doesn't belong to my office, I don't supervise it. It's a traditional teaching position under the principal. That may be something that you see come into this budget at some point. And as you know, what we try to do is recruit from within and then backfill for the year, because it's less costly. So, but a dean would be the next level, so that we can really allow for the principal to get into the classrooms as well as the assistant principal, allow for more work around the two administrators having more time to be in classrooms, and the dean taken care of, the release times, the cafeteria times, the discipline, except when it's, you know, big issues.
I can tell you, I've heard some feedback from the dean of students from the high school.
Yeah.
The kids, from what I've heard, the kids love him. I mean, he really takes the time to get to know them. He's, you know, like an Aaron Sumner, right? He gets the time to get to know these kids. So when things do go wrong, they feel like they have a connection with him. And some parents also have reached out about how happy they've been with that. So I did email him and let him know the positive feedback that I've heard.
Mr. Sharnesey is a, came out of the classroom, he was the candidate of choice, and I can tell you that based on the day-to-day operations, Mr. Donovan, the building principal, has said that there's no way he would have been able to do certain things this year without that position.
Yeah.
And again, it's a 182-day position. If they do work at a few extra days, we pay them there per diem. But we try to keep that cost down as much as possible. It's a position that, if you're doing it right, as he is, as Bob Bilawa has done here, it just, it changes everything. It's a deal breaker.
Yeah.
It really can allow for other things to take place. So again, those will be the things. The other one that we've had a lot of discussion about that's not in the budget but is listed, and that's the taking a look at, and it's supported by teachers, and that is a coordinator, 6 to 12 of STEM, and a coordinator of humanities, 6 to 12, to really tie in on middle school and high school. So those are some of the things that, you know, as money opens up later on, or in the coming years, we prioritize. Our class sizes at the high school, middle school, here are going to be very good, finally. Our LG and JCS will be, I would say, good to very good, except a question mark in grade two right now. That's our biggest, so we're going to keep an eye on that, as you know. Anytime I see those numbers go up, I try to tackle them. The only issue I have right now is, believe it or not, space. So for those folks who think we have a lot of space, we just don't, because we've created a lot of internal programs, keeping costs down, bringing kids back. You need to have the space for that.
So just a couple of questions, though. So in this budget right now, we have the academic coordinators that you just talked about, and the dean of students for the middle school, or no?
We do not have, we have the academic coordinators in the budget as part of the high school, not the curriculum coordinators, 6 to 12.
Okay.
We do not have the dean in this budget right now. But again, those will be some of the things that we're going to take a serious look at.
Okay.
I.e., if we have savings, we'll prioritize that. I think we're at the point right now that, you know, how much longer do we need to talk about the library media specialist position between the YEL and the middle school? It's time to.
Right.
Yep.
It's time to move forward, right?
I also agree with the dean of students, though, because I do think that, you know, coming out of COVID, not only with the social, emotional issues that we have, you know, there's definitely some behavioral, you know, kids have been, you know, their lives were changed for two years.
Right.
And so there's a lot of anger from kids, from parents, you know, that I think just needs to be addressed. And I think when you have somebody like we have here and at the high school who knows the kids, it helps them to kind of navigate through some of the, you know, anger or frustration issues that they may still have.
Well, the other thing that it does, too, is at least, at least a good conversations as well. I mean, I had, I've had dean of students when I was a principal, and what I felt was that those positions really connect to all types of kids.
Right.
But really, the kids that are struggling with discipline, what they do is they create these relationships that are very different from the assistant principal position. And that's not a, that doesn't mean that assistant principals don't do a good job. It just means that there's a different relationship.
Right. And hopefully, that will kind of change our SROs as well. There's not so much on them.
Right.
You know, they still play a huge part, but it's not all on them to help with some of the disappointments.
Yeah, and I'm glad you brought that up with the SROs, because, you know, we, thanks to Chief Clark, he's got, you know, we split the position, as you know, with Sergeant Dennett, and then Officer Robashad is fully funded by the police department budget. So what does that mean? Well, that means hooray for a district like Norton to have two SROs full-time. I mean, they're in our building, out of 180 days, about 165 to 170 with kids, and teaching lessons, the middle school in particular. And then they're also trying to create time at the elementary level, you know, by visiting, by going down for certain topics and all of that stuff. So, you know, we walked in on, just the other day, doing a learning walk on Officer Robashad doing, you know, a presentation on students, you know, buying, you know, how to say no to buying or taking drugs from somebody, you know, a dealer and all that stuff, just role-playing and trying to get kids to understand the pressures and things that go through that.
What I found interesting is, I think the other day, one of the new Norton police officers was at the middle school observing the SRO in the classroom. So I mean, they're using that position as training their new officers. So I mean, it's all, as you mentioned, teachable stuff.
Then the other, only other things I wanted to kind of briefly talk about is we do have a set transportation bid for four more years. FY20, two more, two more years after five.[1704.14] years after five.
Yeah.
Our after-school, before, before-school, after-school, current champions program, that's up to bid right now for a five-year. I think that closes...
Closed on Friday.
Closed on Friday. So we'll be going through that process. And how many bids do we have?
Four.
We have four bids.
Yes.
Which is, you know...
Good competition.
I think the most we have was three in years past, and a couple were...
Yeah, we had a lot of interest in it this year.
We had about six or seven calls.
Yeah, yeah, tons of phone calls, which is hard to have conversations during a procurement period, because you're not really allowed to talk to people. But there was a ton of interest in it.
Added to that is, we have a very stable enrollment. I can honestly tell you that for the first time in a long time, where we're not, you know, just losing students, but we're actually picking up students. Formula-wise, it's not enough. I mean, you get to pick up a ton of students to get to see some benefits, but that's a good thing for us, especially at the elementary level.
So I think that was actually gonna be one of my questions for you, is, was how does our enrollment look? Because, you know, every few years, we start to hear the talk about, you know, can we combine a building?
Right.
So I have heard that circulating...
We should shut a school, because we're losing kids.
Right, I have heard that circulating. Again, people kind of having that conversation, so I think it's important to note what our enrollment is.
Very same. We're in an up year this year overall, coming out of COVID. That's unheard of in many school districts our size. So, and I'm not talking about we're up sixty or a hundred, we're up a few students, but the fact of the matter is, we also know that we still have students out there that became homeschooled, that we've never, at a larger number, and coming out of COVID, we may see some of those numbers come back.
And I think our school choice numbers alone speak for themselves. I mean, that's a...
It's your reputation.
It's, yeah.
I mean, you're, you're dealing with Norton Public Schools is seen to, well, I'm one of them, is seen as a place that gives options, either because of family situations, or, you know, we have one person who's, who's been calling almost weekly, because they, they travel into Norton every day, and they're running around with their head cut off, you know, trying to get, pick up and drop us in the current time, and that's why they wanna, one of the reasons why they want to come to Norton, it just makes it better on the family. So that's a good thing.
What do our numbers look like for, you know, other schools in the area, like the, the Charter School, the Fians, like are we seeing a drop?
Yeah, so we don't have those numbers yet, but what you're gonna see is a couple of different things. You'll see the continuation of probably stable numbers around the private schools of the charter. I think that's gonna be in that eighty, ninety, ninety-two range on the charter. Gotta remember, we're at two hundred and three students at one time. Don't tell me that full-day kindergarten for free doesn't matter, because it does.
Exactly.
It's incredible, because that's where the numbers are.
Yeah.
You're not, you're losing two or three, you're not...
The same people who told us that that was not true are the same people who are saying, we need to shut a school, because we're gonna lose a bunch of students. Those same, same people continue to be wrong about everything, so...
So, so that's, that's the good thing. The, the other part will be, the Aggies' numbers are pretty stable. I mean, we don't see a lot of increase there. I would say that I would not be shocked to see some movement to Southeastern, because of what's happening, which is...
A, programming that Southeastern offers that we can't.
B, the economy. A, go become a plumber, because you're gonna get a great job right away. That's a good thing for Norton kids.
Right, yeah.
I can't offer it. I don't see that as a knock on Norton schools. I see that as Norton schools' extension.
It's an opportunity for life.
And an opportunity for kids who lived at O two seven six.
It's a smart move for...
So it's a smart move. And in this econ, in this economy in particular, which is gonna be around, I think, for a few years, you know, these kids are gonna be able to go to Southeastern in some cases, graduate plumbing, electrical, or any of the other programs, and potentially go workforce. And again, I, I, I can't say we're gonna get in the way, in the way of that. We are looking at creating our own, as you know, chapter seventy-four programs. We're looking at education and trying to create our own feeder system, because it's a problem. And we're looking at anything to do with legal and supporting public safety. Those are areas where, you know, it's a classroom space, it's not the traditional shops, if you will. But there's a lot of work to be done, and so enrollment being stable is a good thing. Our Norton Teachers Association, which now consists of the teachers and the paraprofessionals, are, I would say, besides language, we're getting closer and closer to, to finalizing a contract. Our administrative assistants have a tentative agreement that they'll be voting on, and we'll come to the school committee. And our custodial union is currently underway, and we've had good conversations, and Wade and I are part of those, and those are moving in a, in a positive direction. Food services has got how many years left? Four?
We just did food service, so we're in year one of the five.
So we're in year one of a five, so we don't have to worry about, about that in general. And then the, the only other, you know, major, if you will, thing to think about would be, coming out of COVID, what does the fall look like? Right? What kind of regression is there? I can't plan for that. All I can do is, is try to have some thoughts in my brain about things that could happen. As I walked the buildings this week, and specifically two of our buildings, most are not wearing a mask, some are. Sherri and I had a discussion off to the side, a, a long-term, some concerns, some concerns about students wanting to wear masks, not related to COVID, but more social, emotional, maybe. So those are the things we'll keep a track on. Staff that are still wearing it, staff that are wearing it to support the students in their classroom that are wearing it, not necessarily because they want to wear it, that's happening too. But, you know, we're probably looking at eighty-eight, ninety, ninety-two percent not wearing masks, the other eight to ten percent choosing to, to wear a mask, which is perfectly fine.
And we haven't seen any issues with, I know, we talked strongly about, you know, these kids who choose to wear it, there should be no issues.
No.
We're not seeing it. I didn't think that we would.
I don't think we would either, but I think that we also try to make sure that our parents have conversations with our kids, and I'm, I'm gonna suggest that parents who needed to probably did.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean it couldn't happen tomorrow, in terms of a kid picking on another kid because they're wearing a mask. Of course it could. Some kids have their masks wrapped around and decide to put it on in certain instances. I think that's great. So it's very individually-based, which I think a lot of the Norton, I should say, some of our more vocal community wanted it to be. So I think that's a good thing. It kind of makes my phone calls and emails less, so I'm happy to support that, as you know.
I think it speaks volumes to, to all of our students, right? Because you've got the majority of kids not choosing to wear a mask, but they're not necessarily making comments to the kids who choose to wear a mask. And then you also have the kids who are choosing to wear a mask, where they are, they're confident enough in themselves to be able to put a mask on, even though they may be in the minority, they're confident enough to put a mask on, and, and, you know, because that's how they feel comfortable.
Right.
So I think in, in all aspects, we should be very proud of our students, for decisions they're making, for the way that they're handling it. You know, sometimes, or a lot of times, they're better behaved than adults. So I think we should be very proud of, of how our students have handled this.
That's, that's well said. The only...
And I did it without crying.
Yes.
I just want to note that to all my friends here today.
It's still early. No tears until ten-thirty. I also want to say that Karen and a team of educators in, in Norton are working on our student information system platform. As you know, we have School Brains right now. We're somewhat growing out of that and are looking at our options. So we have a team of people that is budgeted for, it's in here, it's a, it's a good sixty, eighty thousand dollar line item. And we're looking at a very comprehensive approach. We're down to, I believe, three different, down to two. Okay, it was three, we're down to two. So some decisions already been made that I need to be caught up on, and that's a good thing. But really, it's, it's about access, it's about, we're ready to move to, to be doing more things around that, that area and providing information to not only our staff, but also our students' ease. And then the next big one, not in the budget this year, that will move forward, is, is we need to do an upgrade to our webpage and, and really bring in, so you'll see that probably for FY twenty-four, unless there's a potential to do something this year that, you know, funds open up. But I, I don't see that happening, because that's costly as well.
You can see the town updated there, it looks really nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, the Town Hall one looks really, really good. A lot of communities are going to that system. That's like the big one that's sold to the, the communities. It's, it's easier to use, it's, it's brighter, it's, it's got a ton of information, but it's just easier to use. And that's what we want to go with.
I was talking to the town clerk and just had a question, and she's like, oh, the date's wrong on the website. And within five minutes, she was able to fix it and refresh and...
Right. One of the things that we will do to our webpage, probably in the next, I'm gonna say, probably by May, is we're gonna take a look at everything to do with COVID coming down, or just being put into history.
Yep.
And then if we have to restart it again, for whatever reason, moving in that direction. But it's time to psychologically continue to move forward. Of course, support those that need our support. So that's kind of the big picture. I expect to do the PowerPoints and all this for you, for the, for the pre-caring next week. I'll keep it simple, but yet try to target. Fit com is not until April, so we have some time to continue to have discussions about the budget. We want to vote it on, on Thursday night, of course, because it's pre-caring and all of that stuff. Also, pre-caring on school choice. And then hope that we have, we have some luck, right? I mean, that's what budgets sometimes come down to, is just a little bit of tweaking and luck here and there. I will tell you, thanks to Mike Unit's conversation with me the other day, healthcare costs are up one percent. That is fantastic. So we've been hovering around three. We just got a one. So we're not dealing with sevens and tens and twelves like we've had to, you know, certain years. So that's a great thing, and great work by all, all the parties that are involved with that, which I'm not. So thank you to, to the town for that. That's all I got. Questions? Comments? Carolyn, I know you're on, Kathleen, I'll start with you, if you guys have any thoughts, any priorities that you want us to continue to look at. This, this is a good time. Again, even after you've voted the budget, the fact is we'll continue to take any ideas and suggestions that you might have, and just run numbers and see what, what it means. We have two major projects underway, and I should have said this earlier, under Wade's direction and support from Matt, and that is the train project and the athletic complex. Thanks to the vote from the Conservation Commission the other evening, are moving forward. Bids will be arriving and opened on the thirty-first, I believe is the date, end of March, and we'll see where we think we're going to be. And we prioritize some things in that bid, as you all know, but once the bids are done, the full Gale associates will come to the full school committee to present the entire project, so that you guys kind of can have some of your input, but also see where we are. There'll be an updated timetable coming out any day now, that really talks about, you know, things from the, all the pre-stuff that happens after the bid is done, to what's the first day shovel in the ground? How do you guys want to celebrate that? Do you want to celebrate that? You know, sometimes with building projects and stuff, you have the shovel in the ground, and you have the final, it's a lot of pomp and circumstance.
I want to celebrate, but I don't think it's a way we can celebrate.
Yeah.
This has been an act of God, getting to this place.
Yeah.
And I think that, you know, I think it's worth mentioning where we are with the athletic complex. I mean, it's been tweaked, you know, a bunch of, a bunch of ways. And we, when we met with the larger group, they were shocked and happy with what, what it looks like. And I think that, you know, just speaking here today about how we've kind of come through this, how our district looks, this is really the, the kind of, to me, like the final thing that puts us on the map, right? Like, we finally get to a place where our schools are in great shape, you know, our education, of course, is always in, in, in great shape, and, and now the athletic complex is, is really gonna put Norton on the map.
And I, I'm glad you just said that, because there's a, a third party that we've done some work with as well, that is working with area school districts. And what we're seeing is that this area of the state has be, is becoming very much, you know, our internal laughing is sports, everything's about sports, but there's also the, the concept of the region, which is, you've got more school districts doing school choice, you've got more school districts opening up turf fields, you have more, one district that's looking at, at some type of an indoor pool. So really, you're trying to create a lot of things in this area of the state that we haven't necessarily been doing at that level, which opens us all up for all of these third-party groups that are paying fifteen thousand dollars for one day to rent one piece. I mean, that's a lot of money. That's a deal breaker for a district like us. If you can make fifty, seventy-five thousand dollars in the year, if you can make thirty thousand dollars in the year just on the use of your field, over time, there's money for upgrades, there's money for changes, there's upgrade, there's, there's your, there's your, you know, potential fees. There's so much that can go into that, so that's exciting.
And, and I mean, that's one of the things we said from the beginning. I mean, you look at some of these spaces, and it's an opportunity to, to generate some funds. I mean, some of these, you know, club programs in the area just don't have space, and some of them have built their own spaces, and it's still not enough.
Right.
It's just another opportunity to get into the big leagues with, you know, tournament play and things like that. I mean, this is what everybody's looking for, because club sports in this area is, is crazy busy.
Yeah, and I think that one of the things that, you know, we've had, we had a parent reach out pre-COVID, who's actually an educator in another district who lives in town, and children are involved in sports in town and activities. We also have to start thinking about something that we don't do a lot of, which is, what are those activities and supports for students not involved in organized sports? I think that's something we really need to spend some time around. So more of the non-traditional, maybe, sports, i.e. esports, and seeing how we can grow that as a community. And by community, I don't necessarily mean the school department. I mean, in, in, I would say, in connection with, in collaboration with the town. Maybe with the senior slash community center opening up down the road, that's an opportunity.
We also have a new park and rec director as well.
New park and rec director?
Again, still not a full-time position.
Right.
But she is new to the job, so, you know, those are things that it'd be nice to kind of work collaboratively again, you know, because we haven't really done that since COVID, so it'd be nice to kind of circle back and...
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
And I think we need to start thinking about those kids, that attending sports and supporting their, their friends and stuff is great, but they're not gonna be the athlete. They want to do, they're gonna be involved with something else. And our groups and organizations at the high school are actually more active now than they've been in a long time, which is a good thing. But, but what happens at three o'clock? So you go play sport, a sport, you have hockey in the evening, you've got all these other sports that we're doing, but what happens to that student at two fifteen when they leave? You know, what could we extend to them into the evening that we're not doing now? So it's something that we really want to have some long-term discussions about, because that is a support for the social, emotional, emotional and mental health of students. And, and it supports families. So for some students at the younger age, having the before-school or after-school, that's just part of the norm of their family and how things work. I mean, I've done it when my daughter was younger. But that doesn't necessarily mean that that's what they want to do. It might be other situations.
Are our clubs back up and functioning, like the, the drama and so everything, middle school, everything is up and running? Okay.
Middle school's doing legally blind this year.
That's awesome.
We have a, a new, very active CPAC.
Yes.
Really wants to work with the community and other organizations.
Yeah, I've seen them all over Facebook.
Yeah, they're really trying to open some doors for the, for our students and our families.
Which is awesome.
So it's really exciting.
Yeah, Vinnie Hayward's done a wonderful job of bringing unified sports into the middle school as well.
That's fantastic.
He's championed that and been phenomenal with it.
Yeah.
They've actually, they're doing basketball now, they did bocce in the fall.
That's awesome.
So, and there's a lot of regular involvement with that as well.
Yeah. So I think it's important for us as a school committee too to maybe have that information, like maybe send us a schedule of when some of these games are because it'd be nice to be able to go. You know, we try to go to other games and support our student athletes and drama and, you know, things like that. But it would just be nice to kind of have that information.
Yeah, and we haven't had CPAC come to the school committee in quite a while, so that should probably be something we do before the end of this year.
We haven't had anybody come.
Right, so.
And then I start having everyone back.
Yeah, and it's a positive thing, right, for all of us involved. It's, in my opinion, you know, some of the things that are, that we're doing. Excuse me, I'm just looking for something. Our capital plan, I just wanted to mention that real quickly so that we full circle have talked about everything to do with the budget. The capital plan has been forwarded. We did recommend a tweak to it because of the floors here. And maybe at the end of this meeting, we can take a quick walk around this building if you would like, since I think we're going to get out early, so that you can take a look at the gym, you can take a look at what we mean by the floor issue. It's a $99,000, $100,000 request. That kind of changed, but it's because the floors are popping and we're actually having to tape floors down because there's no other way to do it. It's the moisture. We need to pop those out, seal it completely, and then put this stuff down. So that's the reason why we put in that request. I don't know where it's going to land, but it's a priority. We also have the second year of the Promethium boards. A request for 150 on that. That was put off from the 85 that we got in the fall. That will solidify the entire middle school being done and maybe a couple of extra things. But really, again, that's a project been underway since Karen arrived, which has been about seven years now going on, wait, Karen? So we're getting there, but sometimes we're slow. And then we also put in the payments of the vans, just to let you know that the.
You're so helpful, Wade.
One of the things that's interesting is that you know.
Is she okay? I know.
We have.
She's choking on the eight years you've been here.
We have the two-year, we have the minivans that are really an issue. And I'll tell you what the, the issue with the minivans is they're backordered. So we have one minivan backordered right now. That's just the industry that we're in. It is what it is. But as soon as that's in, that'll help out in a lot of ways. And then we also have the fire system down at the middle school for an upgrade of about $92,000. And the last thing on there was we need to get telephones into all of our buildings. Our elementary schools do not have classroom phones. That's everything to do with our crisis model is not in delay. You can't just count on cell phones, although that's important. You have to, you should be able to have direct access, which also gives our teachers direct access to parents and families for phone calls during, opportunity to do that. So that's it. Other thoughts?
So before, I have a couple of very basic kind of housekeeping questions, but before I do, so it looks like Kathleen is a hand up. I don't know if that's an old.
I think it's just the.
I think it's the cursor.
The cursor.
Okay, and then the chat, is there, is there something on the chat?
That's the saying, can you hear Carolyn?
Okay. All right, so those are, those are.
Really important things.
All gone. So my questions all kind of tie in together, I think. First, and I guess this is kind of a question that stands by itself, and it's more of an informational question. But Joe, when we, when we look at the school choice funds used for budget support, the 2.1 million, do we, do we have a sense of whether that's generally going to be in the operational budget? Or do we, do we look at that like that is potentially going to be one-off? You know, my, my issue when we put it in the operational budget, and we've been doing it for some years now. And I think I've kind of come around to the fact that it's just going to be what it is. So I'm more asking as curiosity than anything else.
So we're continuing a lot of, we're supporting a lot of materials and supplies in that budget. So if we, if we long-term have to take a hit there, it's not necessarily people. It's other things that, like we've done in the past, as you remember in FY14 or 15, we took a huge hit. We were going 300, 300, 300,000 every year of not taking it. And then we made a decision that we just couldn't continue that, but we weren't going to get that in the budget. So you'll see some of that here. Tech leases are going to be somewhat down in terms of school choice. And that, thanks to the work that Karen did with getting that $800,000 grant, that's really helped out. So even like, like our tech number, Karen, correct me, I think it's up like 150,000, which is probably the smallest increase that the tech department has seen in all the time that you've been here. So her work is paying off to not hit the operational budget or even school choice as much as it has in the past. But that's figure, yeah, it's, it is what it is.
The tech leases is actually an operational cost that I would, I would not object to quite honestly.
Yeah, and we've been, well, we've been trying, we've been trying to move that, as you remember, we've used kind of the kindergarten model. You know, take, remember when we did kindergarten, we took 300,000 in operation, 150 from choice.
And then you start to slowly find one out.
We continue to try to do that. Here's the issue. Long-term, our big issue that we're seeing is that the operational budget isn't just taking over for things, more so than choice grants. We want to be careful about these federal grants that are going to go away.
Same, same principle applies, right?
Same principle, but the problem is we have a better chance of continuing our $1 million in school choice than the $1 million grant.
Right.
That's the difference.
And then, so when I'm looking at, and this is probably a question from Matt, when I'm looking at the, the new staff, the deferred, is the deferred included in our total increase, the 1.5 million increase? Or is, it's, it's not? Okay, so the 1.5 is X the deferred, which looks like it's about, what, 580,000?
Deferred is 782,000.
Oh, sorry. Okay, I was, I was X-ing the 202 out. All right. So 782, all right.
And can I, can I just comment that I just want you to see that we have a couple of very unique circumstances here. You know, we have the college and career readiness, which is at chapter 74. It's our, it's our, all of those specialized four topic areas that we're going after. That's been deferred. The elementary specialist is going to be a priority, has to be a priority because those are the people that have direct, give us the scheduled changes because of the music, the art. So that's what we mean by specialist.
So right now, the way that it's working, we're sharing staff across all three buildings because you don't necessarily need a full-time PE teacher at LGM, so that people are shared. But what, because we're sharing staff, it really hogtied, I guess. I can't think of another word right now, the schedule. So we're thinking about providing students with interventions, specialized classrooms, special education support. It's so difficult to access students and to do it in a way that makes sense. And it's really hindering the intervention process at all three of the elementary schools. So thinking about coming out of COVID, thinking about making sure we want to continue to accelerate learning for all students. This is something that needs to change. It needs to change for the interventions. It needs to change for our special education schedules. But it's, it's like, it's piecemeal. So you might want to, you know, increase this person by point two, but now we're going to do something else over here by point four. So it's a very complicated process when they're shared across those three buildings.
Right. So we're trying to stop the sharing of the jobs. Okay.
Yeah, let me, let me just kind of be clear. I'm not, I'm not debating the need for any of these. I'm just trying to get a sense of where we are in the numbers. And the reason I was asking if the total included the deferred is, is one of my other questions is if we don't get the, and I think you had said that potentially the 4.84 would be more like a three.
Well, if we defer some transportation like we've done in the past, because it's not due until the fall, then that's going to come in. You know, if we do about a half a million, half, 550 or so, it comes in at about 3.13.
So assuming, assuming we don't get that, assuming we get something more in the area of two and a half, what's, what in this budget are we looking at as first to go?
We would take a look at significant expenses would be the first thing for us to cut further. So we'd be zeroing out some line items. And then we would look at staffing.
What are some examples of significant expenses?
If there's an increase, for example, at the high school of $40,000 for technology, for textbooks, or any of that, we would start looking at those first.
Okay, all right.
We're trying to stay away from what we created, which was the, the positions such as interventionist, the classroom sizes. Those are going to be priorities.
Right, okay. And I think lastly, my, so, oh, I have two other questions. So in the added positions, when I look on page four, and I suspect that there's something wonky about this. The financial analyst is listed as a new hire, though it does not look like a new hire. Are we adding a financial analyst?
No, this is a change in position from what we had in the past.
Okay, so that's, this is not a new hire and that's why it doesn't appear in the ads.
It's a new hire as it's the person, but the position's not. So we will change that.
Yeah, and quite honestly, I mean, two years ago or a year ago, I don't know how you were getting a financial analyst for $36,000.
What was happening was, if you remember, we had a non-traditional kind of support staff position. We moved it to that financial analyst transportation, and then we lost that person just a few months ago and hired a new person. We actually stole the assistant financial person for another district, so.
So is that the email that we received the other day with the five-year? Because that was, that was really nice.
That's, that's the kind of work that we're looking at.
Yeah, that was great to see.
Is really looking at analyzing our numbers and what they mean, and also what the FinCom would ask for. You guys have asked for actually as a priority over FinCom, but both of you have, which is let's see some of these line items, what we project them to be over the next five years. That's hugely important.
And then my last question is the, the music teacher. I think I'm, I might be misunderstanding this. So we're taking the music teacher from the hay and moving them to the middle school.
Which means you have to backfill.
Okay, so we are backfilling. All right, that's what my, that's what my question was. So just out of curiosity, why are we not just adding to the, to the middle school rather than move from the hay to the middle school and backfill the hay?
Because that person has actually split between the both, and they've been half-time here, half-time at the middle school. So that person will just move.
So you're adding half to the middle school to be a full-time, and then you're putting a half into the, yeah, okay, got it. All right.
And is the, is the teacher, is it the same as the band?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
So Dr. Bianca has the opportunity to move if he so chooses.
Okay.
Or either voluntarily or involuntarily, but it's my understanding he's going to be fine with it. And it really grows and supports the schedule in that building and also grows that program.
Yeah, he's done a great job.
The other part of it is we're also trying to not have the position connected to the middle school. What the fifth graders should have to be making decisions about going to reading class for music because with all due respect to reading, I'm going to music every time.
Right.
And unfortunately, you kind of need to read.
It's true with the middle school. I mean, kids had to choose between like ICE to do homework or the band.
So this, this changes some of that, right, so that we have more flexibility with, for students and opportunities. And don't forget also, the other thing is although the librarian might only be at the, you know, if that comes to fruition, which I'm going to really hard to do, if that person's at the middle school three days a week, that's another support staff person for our kids. Kids who want, that are doing research and need support, kids who want to go to the library during a certain period of the day to get a book or to just find a quiet space, you know. And so we're providing instruction, we're providing support, and we're providing opportunity. To me, those are, those are three big opportunities for our kids.
So I just want to thank, thank Vinny because I already got the email from Vinny Hayward about the unified schedule, so I'll share it with you guys.
It was passed.
Yeah, I know. I love it. Thanks, Vinny. Thanks, Vinny. Vinnies.
Vinny's worked.
That's awesome. Thank you.
And I, and I heard about the dean of students. We'll put that on our list as well so that, you know, we're all aligned to that. And so that's the way that that works, to me, as a lot in the same way. So an internal teacher moves into position, same salary.
And you backfill.
We backfill.
Yeah, I just didn't understand the, I thought we were moving it. When you originally talked about, I thought we were moving it.
Right.
And I wasn't sure why it was appearing as an ad and then a wash on the other side, but I understand it now.
Yeah, and the key there too is that we have made, you know, an understanding with the New Teachers Association that when those people apply for those jobs and the principal chooses the person that they want, that at the end of the year, or right around this time, because I'm having those conversations with, with the current people, is the person can move back into their classroom if they didn't like it. If it was too much, they didn't think it was what it is. Or maybe they want the right fit for us. So both sides have an opportunity to just return the person back into the classroom. Which is a win-win because people get to look at administration. I would probably say that long-term, the dean of students position at the high school in particular will probably become a second assistant principal, especially if that person is looking to move in that direction down the road. Right now, it's a win-win for everybody and we're getting what we need from it. So no changes.
Okay. If we, if we don't have any other budget questions, maybe just go over the dates one more time. The open forum on it, the FinCom, et cetera, and then we can.
So the current dates that we have for the school committee is we have on March 10th, this coming Thursday. We have the public hearing on the budget, and we also have the public hearing on school choice. So those are both votes that you'll be taking. The next school committee meeting is the 24th. We'll have the budget on the agenda in case there's tweaks and changes that we want to make. The budget is due to town hall on March. I think it's Friday the 25th. So typically, March, yeah. And then FinCom right now is scheduled for Monday, April 11th, subject to change. Town meeting is June 7th.
After graduation, right?
Yeah, graduation is June 2nd.
Is that a Saturday?
The 7th is a.
7th is a Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday, okay.
Graduation is the Thursday before.
Elections on the Saturday now, right?
Right, that's April 30th.
Election is April 30th. So I'll have Terry put all these dates and electronically send it to all the committee members and the administrators as well. But that's the, so we have to have a voted budget before the 15th because I'm mandated by law to communicate for any layoffs by the 15th.
Of April.
Of June.
June, oh.
So town meeting is to open and close on the 7th. So what that would do is if our budget moves forward and it's done, we currently close school on Tuesday, the 21st. Depending on any further.
Snow days coming up.
Better night.
And then, to be quite honest, I have many of the administrators and those with vacation time, you're probably going to see a lot of use at the end of June because people are going to, you know, use them or lose them is what happens. So that's it.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions, anything? Any comments? No?
No.
And Karen, we've got nothing on the Zoom?
No.
Okay.
So the only other part was we had a discussion earlier about, I don't know if we physically want to take a quick walk today here. You know, we can do that or set it up for another meeting that will be here. We can take the next five meetings and we'll take them through buildings. So middle school next week, the following meeting, we could move to one of the other buildings and so on and so on in that way. Because besides the budget, the school choice, there, the, there aren't a lot of hot topics until we actually know what numbers will start to actually look like. You know, there are major policy changes coming. I do want to see, after this upcoming school committee meeting, I wouldn't mind setting up each of the school committee meetings thereafter to have kind of a local presentation, if you will, of best practice, a good thing that's happening in our school and have the kids come to a meeting along with staff that are involved, kind of go back to the way we used to do things. So I'll defer to Jen on that, but I think we need to have a teaching and learning on our agenda. Doesn't have to be anything long, but something that really shows the quality of some of the good things that are happening in our schools. And I know our teachers would be excited to do that. Of course, the kids love coming, so.
Sure.
Okay.
All right, so what's the, well, you know, let's, let's do this. Let's, let's not.
Take it up to the next meeting?
Yeah, because we have two members who aren't here. So, and I'm not going to carry that board around. So why don't we hold that for when we do the world tour?
Sure.
And then, and we can do it then. So any.
Yeah, and what we'll do is we'll do the middle school, the next meeting, and decide. And then we can just come full circle to the middle school being the last building to get the tour and all of that.
Sure.
And I think it's good, I know for Wade, just to let us know what updates have been done and kind of things that are on the radar of what needs to happen. Because I know you and I did that, I think with you guys a while back. We walked through each school and kind of wrote down. So it'd be nice to kind of full circle moment to see what's been done, what still needs to be done.
So I think one of the big things, and Matt, Wade and I have had this discussion, is how to support Wade with these two major projects coming up. The athletic complex is going to be a 10, 12-hour day of supervision, making decisions and that type of stuff. So we need to have some discussions about how we're going to help Wade's office on that. I could buy having someone else defer some of his stuff so he can deal with the complex. Same thing with Aaron. I think Aaron's going to be somewhat involved with making some day-to-day decisions.
I think these positions are starting to grow beyond what we have capacity for right now, quite frankly.
Yeah, I agree.
And so with respect to that, Wade, maybe as you're going through the things that need to be done, et cetera, perhaps we could get kind of a wish list too, if you know what I mean, like not things that we have to do. But hey, these are things that we may want to think about putting on the radar, even if they seem a little bit fanciful or kind of, you know, pipe dreams, just so we, so we know about them. Because you never know, like sometimes these things, you know, an opportunity comes up and we want to be ready to, to jump on it. So we could add that kind of stuff to it as well.
And just be mindful, it started in this room years ago when the comment about preventative maintenance isn't sexy, if you remember that.
Yes, I do remember.
How, how well that worked for us, Mr. Wade and his crew's work during COVID.
Yeah.
It kept three-fourths of the problems that other districts dealt with and we didn't have to deal with.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's, it's crazy.
We're spending a lot of time patting ourselves on the back today.
Kind of needs to happen.
Yeah, no one else is doing it.
Is Thursday too soon though, Joe? Because our next, because our next meeting is at the middle school. Is that too soon for you guys to kind of get a handout for us?
We'll do it for the following meeting.
Yeah.
To make sure we have it for the following.
We just kind of threw that on you guys that, hey, we'd like a list of, you know, so it's.
Well, we have a list, if you remember, that you did a walkthrough with us.
Right.
So we'll use that list and update it for the capital as well. And we have the five of capitals.
Okay, that'd be great.
I mean, 99% of the stuff's not going to be time-intensive anyways because it's going to be stuff that's years out.
Right.
So if we get it the next meeting after that, it's fine.
Yeah, exactly.
One of the exciting things on your school committee meeting for Thursday is the LGM playground. Really excited about that. That's coming to you for a vote because you have to allow for them. It's all like no cost of the budget, but still have to.
Vote it down.
Is that because of the solar? The solar?
Well, we're, we're asking those questions about the donation of solar as well.
Yeah.
Is reaching for the company about that tentative agreement that we had. We haven't seen any yet.
Right.
So we're pushing on that.
Yeah, okay, good.
Right now, the team is coming to us with it fully funded by them over probably two or three years with the big nugget in the first year. The smaller nugget in the two or three years later, depending.
Good.
Need a motion to.
Okay, yeah, if nobody has anything further, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor will do a roll call vote. Mrs. Gallagher? Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Sheedy?
Yes.
Mrs. Cohen?
Yes.
And Mr. Savas is also a yes. All right, thanks, everybody. We'll see you in the next meeting.